You could not get out if you needed to go somewhere like the hospital, doctor's office, what have you. The section of town I live in is E, which is Cypress Knoll. There's only one way in, that's East Hampton. There's only one way out, that's East Hampton onto Belt Air. Now, East Hampton dead ends up by Highway 100. There's a vacant strip of land there that could be used as an exit only and turning left, I'm sorry, turning right onto 100. That could be a one-way traffic exit only. That would give you the ability to exit that subdivision in the event of an emergency blocking the East Hampton going toward Belt Air. Some years ago, some folks decided that we should put a barrier up there to keep the people from Banel coming through East Hampton to go to Publix. That's when I moved into the subdivision in 2003 in January, and there was only six houses on my street. Today, the street's full. There's no more vacant lots, as well as other streets in that subdivision. We've grown immensely as Palm Coast has grown. I guess my time is up. Please consider opening up East Hampton one way to Highway 100 with a right-hand turn. Thank you.
For your comment. Are there any other speakers that would like to address City Council this morning? Please come forward. Yes, sir.
Good morning. Robin McDonald, Palm Coast. Can someone from the city please advise the residents how long the project is going to take? I'll call it the building of the bridge, the sidewalk bridge that runs along Belt Air up towards Buddy Taylor Middle School. Six, eight months ago, the city workers did some work there, and we thought that that was going to be the end of the project. Well, that's what you get for thinking. There is now a new project going on, and I'd like to know the cost factor behind it, and also how long we anticipate the project taking, because the problem is that because it's a sidewalk, people, especially children that go to that school that don't get bused in or driven by their parents that walk to school can't walk on the sidewalk, excuse me, because there's no more sidewalk to walk on. This project seems like it's taking forever to get it done, so I'd like to know when the expiration date is going to be finished and what's going to be the final cost to the city. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. City manager, you have a note on that? Very good. Thank you. Are there any additional members of the -- yes, sir?
Good morning. Jason Howard, Palm Coast, 121 Cimarron. This is my second time speaking. I see that there's some fresh blood up here today, and welcome, and hopefully we start to have some good conversations. I'm here to discuss some sidewalk issues that Reverend Al here has been front lining, and I've taken a lot of attention, and the reason I've taken some attention is because I live on Cimarron. I watch on a daily basis, and I do understand in full the dangerous nature of the lack of sidewalk on this street. In the last week, I've almost been hit. I just drove by a woman wearing, you know, fluorescents just walking today, and that's ridiculous. Watching kids ride bikes in the yards on the side banks because people are doing 40 around the bend. I mean, it's getting insane, and I'm a pragmatist at heart. I'm a realist. Al's a little more idealistic on this issue, and we've been to a steering committee meeting now, and I understand that the amount of what it would take to do the mile and a quarter is somewhere in the neighborhood of $2 million. I do understand that sidewalks are probably 800th on your list, and we, after the exploration or the exploratory committee, spent somewhere in the neighborhood of $200,000 telling us what priority streets need sidewalks. We've come in sixth, and we are first without a school. We are sixth overall, I believe. Don't quote me on that. What I'm here for today is to try to find some common ground, because I have no belief that you're going to bring Cimarron $2 million. I can look at your budgets. I can look at the deficits. I can look at the realistic nature of this, and I can look at the things that are in front of me, and I can sit there and say, "That's a pipe dream." What isn't a pipe dream is to get some kind of commitment or some kind of resolution resolved from you to sit there and say, "Okay, maybe through grant, maybe through privatization, maybe through some offset, bureaucratic offset, maybe we can work together and we can allocate this amount or do this or do this by the time you guys do your budgets," which I think is in March. Now, we're sixth on the list, but I can tell you that if I can smell some blood in there and I can see something, then I could probably work to attain some of this to make sure that that becomes reality. But what I need to know is what's real and not real, because today, December 13th, if that human being or if that child does die in my watch over the next X amount of months, I want this marked as the day that I came conciliatory as opposed to adversarial. With that, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, Mayor Gene Dowd, City Council. First, happy holidays to everyone, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. I try to be consistent when I get up in front of the council, and again, I will thank all first responders, all military, past and present. And today, there's two people sitting up there that lost family in the line of duty. Thank you. I don't know what else to say. I also want to -- I was here last week. I want to congratulate the two new members of the City Council. I saw quite a bit of you in November and August. You acted professional. You deserve to be sitting there. I heard you at debates. Know you well. I also heard last week they thanked Virginia for the amazing job on the election, and the city manager and the city council are right. I had the opportunity to volunteer at the canvas board over at the county building a number of days, and in order to save money and work with the county on the election, Virginia and members of the city employees went there and worked the canvas board. Over 20 mail-in ballots had 20,000 had to be opened, and they handled themselves professionally. They took it serious, and there was not one single issue, and that's what the county commissioners reported and the county supervisor of elections. And Virginia, thank you, and to all those members of the city that went there also. Thank you.
We thank you for your comment. Are there any other members of the public that would like to address City Council at this time? Yes, sir?
Good morning. May I have five minutes possibly? My name is Michael Sukinik. I'm a civil environmental engineer licensed in the state of New York. What's brought me here is a mission-like attitude to build a nice, clean environment at my property to support life of microorganisms, insects, birds, and so on. But what I found out recently, I don't even think it's possible. The subject I'm going to present is Flagler, so-called East Flagler mosquito control. Let's look at what is behind these Flagler mosquito control. Periodically, tons of pesticides being dropped to the air from airplanes with the intent to kill mosquitoes. The question is, is it possible by these actions to kill just mosquitoes without killing or at least severely damaging all the other species, humans included? The answer to this question is based on whom you asked. From natural sciences viewpoints such as environmental chemistry and biology, the answer is no, it is not possible. In nature, all is interconnected and built pretty much from the same biologic material, so poisoning the whole environment will harm all the species, not just one of them, but seems like from political science viewpoint, the answer is yes, we can poison the air, killing just mosquitoes and disregard everything else. Let's look at the facts. Last Monday, I was working at my yard. A couple of native old birds, I occasionally see at the large oak tree at neighbor's yard. The birds were crying desperately. I looked up and high in the sky, I noticed multiple white tails, and the planes leaving these tails. I called the city, and they called me. It is East Flagler mosquito control. Since that time, the air becomes so polluted, especially during the nights, that I was waking up in the middle of night with a headache. I had to shut down windows and turn on the filtering unit at home. So now looks at mosquito can be controlled naturally. With the cooler weather, mosquito population was already reduced drastically. Certain trees like eucalyptus act as mosquito repellents. Certain predator species are dying on mosquitoes. Do we plant those trees and protect those wildlife?
Will the speaker be able to kind of summarize and finish up the comments?
Yes, I have just one minute or so.
Well, your three minutes are expired now, but could you just kind of wrap it up for us?
Basically, that's a problem. We bombing our environment, and we not even seems like understand what we're doing. We're killing the life. We're killing the birds. We're, you know, we poisoning the air. We're killing ourselves. So the question is, why we doing that?
Appreciate your comments, and I would ask communications to get with the speaker and put him in touch with the municipal government that's in charge of our counterpart for the mosquito control district. So you'll get that information from our communications director. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Are there any additional speakers that would like to address City Council at this time? Seeing no one come forward, I will close public comment, and we will move forward on the agenda. We have no minutes, I guess, right? To our first presentation, and if council would read the presentation title into the record, please.
Of course, Mayor. This is a master services agreement for the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida approving a master services agreement with Barry Dunn for the development of a comprehensive Parks and Recreation Master Plan, providing authorization to execute, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for implementing actions, and providing for an effective date.
Good morning, Ms. McDermott, and please proceed.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Brittany McDermott, Deputy Director of Parks and Recreation, and I am here to provide an update on Council Priority C2. This reads as identify local recreation demands, i.e. aquatics, fields, senior services, et cetera, to balance the need of regional activity centers. I am specifically speaking to the second bullet point, which is prioritize projects on the Parks and Recreation Capital Improvement Plan. Just as a recap, under projected outcomes, we discussed that we would collaborate with Flagler County on a comprehensive countywide recreation master plan to prioritize projects on the CIP. Ms. Johnson presented to City Council on September 6th on the interlocal agreement, which established a framework of how City of Palm Coast and Flagler County government would work together on this. It also did provide for a 50-50 cost share on securing a consultant to provide the Parks Master Plan. We put together a team called POP, which stands for Planning Outplay. Our mission is delivering the highest quality parks and recreation experiences for the entire Flagler County community through collaboration and comprehensive planning. Some of the steps we have taken, as I just mentioned, was establishing the interlocal agreement. From there, we selected a smaller committee from our larger team that was made up of three City of Palm Coast staff members and two Flagler County government staff members. We worked with the City of Palm Coast Finance Department, specifically the Purchasing and Contracts Division, to initiate an RFSQ process, and that's what brings me here today this morning, is we have made a recommendation and are ready to move forward in establishing that master services agreement and implementing a work order. Before I get to our recommendation, I just wanted to discuss the scope of work that we did provide in the RFSQ process. Some notable points from that were a comprehensive inventory of recreation facilities. This would require looking at not just City of Palm Coast facilities, but Flagler County Government, School Board, other municipalities, as well as private recreation areas. We really, again, want that comprehensive inventory. Another part is a needs assessment through community involvement. It's hugely important that we get the voices of our community and that we do provide that input throughout this entire process. That was a notable part of the scope of work. That'll be done through stakeholders, focus groups, community partnerships, as well as statistically valid surveys. And then the last speaks back to that Strategic Action Plan Council Priority item, which is ensuring that we do prioritize the parks projects on the CIP. One thing that is specifically mentioned in the scope of work is that we need to come out of it with a five-year CIP that is feasible, which means looking at some identifiable funding measures included in that to ensure we have a good, robust five-year plan. That brings me to our recommendation of Barry Dunn. Barry Dunn was founded in 1974. They have decades of experience working in local government parks and recreation agencies. Something unique about the staff members of Barry Dunn is a lot of them were former Parks and Recreation professionals themselves, so they were Parks and Recreation Directors, Parks Planners, Parks Superintendents. They have a very intimate and unique experience and knowledge of what it takes to be in Parks and Recreation and how to balance the community needs with those local government processes as well. They are partnered with Miller Legg, an award-winning landscape architecture and engineering firm, with an office right here in Florida in Port St. Lucie. Looking at some of their similar projects, they had City of West Palm Beach, Florida, Martin County, Florida, and City of Parkland, Florida master plans. What these all have in common is those bullet points that I just discussed through the scope of work. They had recreation inventories. They had robust community involvement and ensuring that they provided some short-term, midterm, and long-range goals that were feasible for the cities and counties to work forward. The City of Parkland, Florida had a unique aspect that they had an accelerated timeline, and Barry Dunn was able to get that accomplished. So that brings us into our next slide for our timeline. This was the proposed timeline that Barry Dunn did submit with their bid. You can see they originally anticipated to wrap up in August of 2023. We have asked for a slightly accelerated timeline so that they can be completed in June of 2023, this better alliance with the city's budget and CIP process, and they've been more than willing to accommodate that. We've actually already started on Phase 1 with data collection and analysis. We're starting to get some of the required documents together so that we are able to move forward with that accelerated timeline. The proposed fees that Barry Dunn provided, the cumulative total is within the budgeted amounts that City of Palm Coast and Flagler government were prepared for, so we are very comfortable with moving forward with that number as well. And with that, let's play. We're looking for council consideration of the master services agreement to consult with Barry Dunn for the Parks Master Plan, and I am available to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you for your presentation. Just two things real quick, and then I invite council members to ask questions or comment. I'm not clear on the timeline. I saw your steps. Is there a timeline associated with each of those five developmental steps?
Yes, so what we're looking for is a slightly accelerated timeline. We'd look to hopefully get this contract moving forward this month, and then come January, they would look to actually start with some of the stakeholder interviews. They would do some one-on-one interviews with council members as well, and then from there, the next step is to start providing for that community involvement and feedback. So they'd start meeting with focus groups and developing needs assessment questions. That would probably be sometime February and March. At that point, they would put the survey out. It would work similar to our National Citizen Survey process, where they would get direct mail to select households, but then they would also put it out on a website for public access for more of the community to be able to answer that survey as well. They would collect that results and then ultimately have a plan to present by June of 2023.
So halfway through the calendar year, okay, that answers my question. And just secondly, so is part of the intent of this process to better incorporate and collaborate with the county on all of the parks and amenities that are available to residents throughout the county? In other words, we're sort of beyond the boundaries of the city at this point, but residents are enjoying these amenities regardless of where they lie geographically within the municipal boundaries. So we're bringing together that effort in a more efficient approach, and I assume, do we have a county, not a buy-in, but a county collaborative effort and initiative, if I may ask the city manager?
I would say yes, and we have a great relationship going through this process and making sure that they had ample opportunity to provide input, and that also includes a financial investment.
Thank you. City council members, comments, questions?
You've asked the questions I was going to ask.
I have a couple. With regards to the cost of the analysis, it appears that on one part of the presentation With regards to the cost of the analysis, it appears that on one part of the presentation, the cost is $100,000, and then you have this number listed of 189,920.
Yep.
And I believe you said that it will be split with the county 50/50. So is this number that we're looking at what Palm Coast is responsible for, or is this a total?
So this is the total that Barry Dunn has proposed. City of Palm Coast will be responsible for $100,000, and then Flagler County Government, the remaining. And then if there are any additional costs, it is meant to be a 50/50 cost share, but we are budgeted for $100,000. The interlocal agreement did establish if there were any additional fees at the City of Palm Coast would take those on, but this is a pretty robust budget that they provided, that they don't anticipate seeing increased cost.
And in the contract that we received from them, any type of agreement that we enter into with them, will there be a further breakdown of these numbers because this is very high level?
Yes.
Okay. And then is their scope of work also going to include looking for grants in order to help pay for what we end up wanting to do with this analysis?
Yes, definitely. Part of the scope of work is to identify potential funding measures, which could include grants.
Sorry, I have one more question. When we're looking at the current facilities that we have, is there going to be some type of cost benefit analysis with regards to improving and continuing to do maintenance on some of these facilities versus what doing brand-new facilities looks like long-term? So that we know what is it going to cost to continue to Band-Aid certain things versus providing the same services via a new facility?
Yes, that is provided in the scope of work as well, that they would provide cost benefit as well as a level of service analysis for current facilities, and then identifying potential future facilities as well, and sort of balancing those out. And then ultimately providing that five-year CIP that's feasible and what can we move forward in with funding and everything considered.
Okay, thank you.
Does that answer your question? Good, thank you.
I'd just like to add that I'm very pleased to see that the county and the city are partnering on this initiative, and I do believe that it'll be a great thing for the community and the people that live here in the City of Palm Coast.
Good. We thank you for the presentation and look forward to your next follow-up. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Brittany.
We move forward now to our next presentation, which is Resolution Number Two. If council would read that in for us, please?
Yes, this is a resolution concerning a concession lease agreement for the Palm Harbor Golf Course, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida approving the terms and conditions of the concession lease agreement with Loopers at Palm Harbor Golf Club LLC for food and beverage services at the Palm Harbor Golf Course, authorizing the city manager or designated to execute said agreement, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for implementing actions, and providing for an effective date.
Mr. DiLorenzo, will you begin the presentation?
Sure. Good morning, Mayor and City Council. Jason DiLorenzo, Chief of Staff, and James Hurst with me as well, Parks and Rec Director. And we are here to present the concession lease agreement for the Palm Harbor Golf Course. A little background, you'll remember that the, when the, when the course was managed by Kemper, that included their own food and beverage. In 2017, the city took over management, and we issued an RFP for concessions. The Green Lion Cafe was selected during that RFP process, and through our lengthy negotiations earlier this year, we could not come to a resolution with them, and the lease was terminated on July the 11th, which included a six-months notice, which concludes on January the 15th in about a month. What we were looking to achieve here was to get a vendor that better fit the golfers and the golfers' needs, and also make sure that we were meeting your priorities that we understood from our previous discussions about the contract and the agreement. And also to make sure that we had a good partner that was communicative, provided the customer service that we were looking for, could meet the requirements of how golf operates and have a good facility maintenance, and also to make sure that we were being a good partner and provided timely repairs. So in September, we issued an RFP for concession services. Eighteen entities downloaded the RFP, and four indicated an intent to bid. That's through the electronic process, they actually selected that. Two bids were found responsive and complete, and then a group of staff members individually ranked the two proposals, and Loopers was unanimous selection of the, of the staff members that did that. A little bit about Loopers. It's a new concept, but it's by an experienced restaurateur, Mr. Jamie Bordeaux, who is here today. He and his group currently operate the Beachfront Grill in Flagler Beach, and he has previous restaurant experience in Connecticut as well. And in case you're wondering about the name Loopers, a Google search tells me that a round of golf is considered a loop, and a looper is also another word for a caddy. So the agreement itself is very much like you saw it last when we were here. Nine dollars a square foot, or just under $18,000 annually. It includes a 3% annual increase. The tenant is responsible for electric, propane, telecom, and internet, and 50% of the utilities, city utilities. One difference here is that they may operate a beverage cart, but that if they decide to do that, they will have to acquire the cart themselves. And this includes a, it's a five-year term with three renewals. And one thing about the water and sewer is if in the future we're able to completely separate the water and sewer billing, this contract, the agreement allows us to then bill for actual costs. So this is the situation we have now, but if in the future it changes and we can actually just charge them for actual costs of water and sewer, then we have that ability to do So those are the two difference, differences from when you saw them previously. The previous agreement that we had worked on and that you saw City Council just had two renewals and not three. And I'm here for any questions, James as well, and then also, if you're ready, we can introduce Mr. Bordeaux and his team.
So I'd just like to take a moment to thank staff. I mean, this has been a long, grueling process, and I'm delighted to hear that the communication has been, you know, responsive on both sides. This certainly, this agreement that you've described conforms to the direction that I had offered along with City Council so many months ago, and gets us to that point. So with that, I do, I'm sorry, I do have one question.
Yes, sir.
Is there some work to be done during the transition period?
Yes, sir. I should mention that at the business meeting, following, meetingly following this, if you approve this, then James is gonna go through a transition plan with you. He has a few slides on the, what the transition will look like.
Okay, so this is a workshop, so I wanna give City Council a chance to kind of ask these questions. I appreciate it'll be in the business meeting. What I'd like you to get to, and if you choose to do it during the business meeting, that's fine, I wanna make sure that City Council is clear, staff is clear, and the applicant is clear on who is responsible for what, just to reinforce the good communications that we're starting off with, so that we have a very seamless transition, so that our golfers and the public in general can enjoy the services of the establishment at the earliest possible time.
Yes, sir. So for the last several weeks, Loopers has been meeting onsite with Mitch Lehman, our golf supervisor, and to discuss, you know, what that's gonna look like. And I believe this past, last week, they met with, Monday morning, they met with our facilities folks as well to talk about what, what work we think we're gonna need to do to prepare for them to take over. We have some maintenance work to do as well.
Good. All right, with that, city council members, questions, comments?
I have no, no questions, Jason. I just wanna congratulate you and staff doing a great job. And I know that Jamie runs a great business out in Flagler Beach, and I know it's gonna be a great business here in Palm Coast, and it's not gonna cost our taxpayers like the previous agreement did. So thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Council members?
Yes, thank you, and I'm looking forward to this. I think this is an awesome workout for what was a pretty contentious issue, and so I applaud you all as well, and I look forward to Loopers being at the golf course. I do have some questions, and I don't wanna convolute the two meetings between this meeting and the business meeting. So if you plan on covering something in the business meeting that I ask, please let me know. But as far as this goes, I share the mayor's concerns with regards to the work that needs to be done before Loopers does take over and who will be responsible for that cost. And going on that, I think that it would be valuable for the public to understand what our break-even point is on this versus the previous situation that the city was in with the Green Lion. So if you have those numbers, even if it's very high level with regards to when we're going to be in the black, so to speak, that would be helpful.
Okay, I can bring the, I can bring a chart back to you at the business meeting, but we are positive cash flow from, from year one, but I'll give you the specific dollar amount. I could, let me just get it for you for the business meeting outside the exact numbers. We have a spreadsheet on that.
Sure, and I'll just save my questions for the business meeting.
I'm thinking kind of along the same terms with Councilwoman Pontieri and the mayor, David Alphen. During the transition period where they moved from the, what is it, Golden Lion that's there?
Green Lion.
Okay. Over to Beachfront Grill taking it over, and there are gonna be costs, they may make changes or whatever to the premises. Again, I'm concerned about who will cover that cost so that it doesn't attack, affect the taxpayers here in city, in the City of Palm Coast. And also, I do believe that Beachfront Grill will be a great business to have there at Palm Harbor Golf Course.
So I think maybe it would be helpful if I did address some of that. So in facilities review of the building, we found a roof leak, so we need to address that. We're gonna do that while the, while the tenants are in transition. And we want to open up the flooring and see what the subfloor looks like, and see if we need to make any improvements to the subfloor. Some flooring in the dining room needs to be replaced because of the roof leak, and we need to check the chick, the kitchen because we had a previous issue there, so we're going to be examining that further. As far as Loopers themselves, they plan a build-out of their own. It's at their cost. They've offered several floor plans that they're considering. All of them are acceptable to us, so it's, it depends on which way they decide to go. They're investing their own dollars. I'll let Mr. Bordeaux tell you approximately what that cost is, because I'm not sure which, if they finalized one yet. So we are doing routine maintenance to our building. They are doing aesthetic changes to fit their operation. They also need to build out a kitchen because they have to, they're responsible for all their own equipment in the kitchen, so they'll, they'll be moving in new equipment as well.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, and when do they expect that that will begin? And will it begin at the end of the existing lease, which ends in January, January 15th, I believe?
Yes, that's a very good question. So how we have it structured right now, the lease would start on January the 16th, and this will give them the opportunity to start working on their, their build-out. And also, we're, we're still working on having temporary alcohol services that they would provide. The, at the golf course, we're going to have, while the kitchen is closed for renovation, we're going to have a food truck there. But the food truck doesn't have the ability to serve alcohol, so Loopers has offered to do that temporary service. We're still working out exactly what that's going to look like. The anticipated build-out is approximately six weeks, but you know, that's hard to say right now in this like economic condition and with materials. So we hope, it's our intention to have the restaurant completely open by March the 1st, but their rent, the start of their rent payments will be dependent on their CO when they can have full operations.
Yeah, that was gonna be my next question, but thank you.
You're welcome.
So with that, do we get an opportunity to meet the entrepreneurial chef who is looking forward to taking on this project?
Yes, please.
I'll just note while Mr. Brittany's making his way up here, if you don't mind, Mayor. So yes, the lease commences on January 16th. Rent starts on March 1st, or when the CO is issued, whichever one is later. And we've also, in addition, provided a letter to the current tenants going through the transition plan, talking about what they need to do, what we're gonna do, the equipment removal, how that will go. So we've already provided that more than a month in advance to the current tenants so that we're hoping for a smooth transition and they're, complete their operation and are out on the 15th.
Very good. Mr. Bordeaux, welcome to the City of Palm Coast.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Thank you all very much for the opportunity, for what we've been going through now with, it's nice to finally meet you. I've talked to you several times, never got to see your face. We appreciate it. My partner Dudley and I both appreciate the opportunity that you've afforded us, and we look forward to being a good, long-lasting relationship. Right now, the city manager's office has been very helpful. Jason has been very helpful, and James also. Mitch from the golf course, tremendous help. The building department had actually done, we had them out there yesterday with facilities, they did a great job. And just about everybody we've come in touch with, the city, very helpful, and we thank everybody. You've done a great job, really. In this, the smooth transition, we couldn't do it without the staff at the Green Lion, believe it or not. They've been very, I shouldn't have said it that way, I apologize, but the Green Lion staff has been very helpful. They let us in at 7:00 AM. They, we're out of there by 8:00, so they can conduct their business, and we appreciate all that that they've done for us also. In this very short time, I will be in an enviable position for an American male. I will be able to get to the gym at 4:00. I will be able to go to a golf course for four hours. I will be able to go to a beach bar for four hours. And all of this without getting yelled at for doing nothing all day. So I've been, I'm in a lucky spot. So I have a great wife, we have a great family, but I also have a great staff, also at Beachfront Grill. And we have tremendous regulars, which a lot of you people know. Also, one of the people that involved, that did all the paperwork that you saw originally, Sierra Katz, she's here with me now. She had just graduated from school as a project manager when we started this. The very first job she got, she did a 77-page report for you folks to see, which even I didn't see until that day as well. So she did a fantastic job, we couldn't do it without her. So our plan, as some of your questions, we plan to relocate the bar. There is no bar, so we gotta relocate a bar. So we're gonna put a bar in, and we're gonna need our kitchen, our menu desires, a bigger kitchen than what is afforded to us right now. So we got to do a new kitchen. The menu will be adjusted with that, as best we can do. And we plan on having a lot of TVs, and I really plan on being golfer-friendly. I belong to two country clubs up in Pennsylvania, and I have an idea what I'd like to do when I get off a golf course, and I pretty much assume everybody likes that as well. So we plan on being golfer-friendly, and also we'd like to be a local neighborhood bar as well. The neighbors, we get a lot of people coming down now who have never been there before asking about what's going on up there, and they live in the neighborhoods, so we plan on helping them out as well. Breakfast, lunch, and dinner is gonna be pretty much on the menu, be flexible. And like I said, we look for a great, long, and healthy relationship, City of Palm Coast.
Very good. Mr. Bordeaux, I appreciate your comment, especially about the locals, and since we have our friends here from the press and the media, I would ask them to highlight and underscore that this concession will be available to all residents within the City of Palm Coast and beyond. Of course, the focus or the theme relates directly to its geographical proximity to the golf course, but open to the public at large, and I hope that the entire community will enjoy the service and the reputation that you have brought forward, and that we all enjoy a wonderful success together. So with that, are there any questions from city council members?
I just wanna say, Jamie, despite your joking about hanging out at the bar at the beach and hanging out at the golf course... the beach and hanging out at the golf course, I grew up in a family restaurant in New York. I know how hard you work.
I appreciate it.
I've seen you work hard at your restaurant. I know you're going to be successful here.
I got great staff. I got great regulars as well, so.
And, Mr. Bordeaux, I thank you for your hard work in advance. I'm looking forward to it. Love your current restaurant, Beachfront Grill is my favorite, so I think this is just the best scenario we could have asked for, so I'm looking forward to it.
Congratulations on your election, everybody. I walked in here first day and did not know this was your first meeting, so sometimes you think we're neighbors. Palm Coast might just love me in Los Angeles to Flagler Beach someday, so congratulations.
I was just curious, what would your hours be? Because I know a lot of the golf courses, they close after a certain early hour. Will you be open later?
It's a great question. You know what, I'll tell you, it's funny, is that you would think that the Beachfront Grill would be open all night, especially because of where its location around the ocean and everything, and Fins and all the bars up the street are open until 2:00 in the morning. We close at 9:00. So, we're flexible. So, we will stay open as long as there's people there. Obviously, we're in business. The Pittsburgh Steelers have come to my bar. I'm a Dallas Cowboys fan, but I'm a businessman, so we'll stay as long as people want to be in the bar. If the neighborhood's coming in, we will stay late for them. That's not a problem, but I think we got to be out of there by 10:00 I think.
Believe that's it.
Somewhere like that, because of the noise ordinance and stuff like that, which we're agreeable to.
Okay, well, I'd like to wish you all the best, you and your staff at Beachfront Grill, and I'll be looking forward to coming in.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
My compliments for utilizing the resource of our next generation to help prepare your business plan and looking forward to the future. Bringing a youthful element to our city of Palm Coast is something that we very much desire, so thank you for considering that in your planning.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it.
Very good. Thank you. A pleasure. With that, we'll move on to our third resolution. If Council would read that in for us, please.
This is a resolution concerning the Community Development Block Grant Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report for fiscal year 2021-2022. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida approving the Community Development Block Grant Program for fiscal year 2021-2022 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, authorizing the city manager or designate to execute the necessary documents, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for implementing actions, and an effective date.
Thank you, Counselor. Mr. Papa, would you present, please?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Good morning, Mayor, members of City Council. I'm Jose Papa with the Community Development Department. And having new members on the board, I know some of this is very familiar to you who've previously been sitting on the board, but what I'd like to do is just maybe take a step back and give some additional history and background on the CDBG program, what the city has been able to accomplish with the program, and just an overall, again, background and history on what it's about, what it entails, and what its purpose is. So, let me start. The CDBG program was started in 1974, and it's there to provide funding for community development. What happens is that annually HUD, Housing and Urban Development, federal government allocates to the city a block of funds typically between $450,000 to $500,000. And those funds are to be used for CDBG eligible activities. There's a lot of discretion given to the local municipality on how those funds could be spent, as long as it meets one of the following, and these are the national objectives of the program. It must benefit a low and moderate income person or household, or a low moderate income area. It's there to prevent or eliminate slum or blight as defined by HUD, and to address, and also the third thing is, address urgent community development needs. That is, in an emergency, if we were to have a natural disaster in the city, we could reallocate these HUD funds to address those emergency needs. But that goes back to, you might address that emergency need, but it still needs to benefit a low moderate income person or a low moderate income area. Some of the projects and programs that CDBG funds have been used for, housing-related activities, whether it's through homeownership or rehabilitation of homes or housing units, public services such as homeless outreach or mental health outreach, economic development, job creation, infrastructure improvement, again, in qualified areas, that is, a low moderate income area. And part of the funds could be also used for planning administration and monitoring of the program, but that's limited to 20%. And by planning administration, those are things like oversight, the planning background that goes into the program, and the public outreach that we do when we advertise that we have funds available for our housing rehabilitation program, our first-time home buyers program. In the city of Palm Coast, we first became an entitlement city in 2012, and since that time, we've used our funds for an infrastructure project, again, in a low moderate income area, specifically at the time Seminole Woods neighborhood where we built the multi-use path and the sidewalk network in that neighborhood, again, qualified as a low moderate income census tract or house or area. We've also provided financial assistance. This is for home repair, again, for single-family homes. We have those who are unlimited income, who might need a new roof, a new AC, maybe there's mold in their home due to a leak. We will cure those. We will bring a home up to the required safety standards. It's not a program that's there to increase the value of your home. That is, you know, we will not go in there and replace your countertops with marble countertops simply because you want marble countertops. We're not there to give you a bigger water heater than what is necessary for a single-family home. Again, it's there to make sure that your home is up to code and it's up to health and safety standards. So, and the other thing would be that you have someone in the home who might now need, might have some physical challenges getting into a bathtub. The program will allow the conversion of that bathtub into a walk-in shower stall, again, to help accommodate that homeowner to stay within that housing unit. Another activity we've done, and this is a new one from the advisory board, it's provide financial assistance to first-time home buyers. Been a challenge, of course, with the housing market that we have and the prices that we have, but we were able to assist someone in the past year. And they were, it's for a habitat home, so going in, the home price was already limited, but they just needed some additional down payment in order to be able to purchase the home. So, we were able to, the CDBG program helped that household. Another one is to provide stipends to assist students from low moderate income households to attend the city's summer camp. Again, that one has been ongoing for a number of years, very successful, so that we're, those who are, again, income-qualified basically can attend our camp for free. And finally, the mini-grant program. In the past year, we had some funds through the COVID Act that Congress passed, and we had received some additional CDBG funding. And those funds are now out with Family Life Center and Flagler Cares, where they're providing assistance to those who have been impacted by COVID, and the assistance that they provide is, you know, consistent with their mission, like for Family Life Center, victims of domestic violence, and other, those are in the front of becoming homeless. And same with Flagler Cares. They're there to provide healthcare assistance, I should say, mental health assistance to those in need, and also that some of their funds, they will be offering, again, utility payment assistance, again, or maybe even rent assistance to keep someone from getting kicked out, again, with the, because they did come in through the COVID program, those who have been or are still being impacted by the COVID. With the CD Beach program, there are a couple of things that we must do as a city in order to continue to receive the funding. And these are documents that need to be submitted to HUD through either five years or annually. First is the consolidated plan, and this is just basically a five-year document that lays out a vision for the city and how we intend to address our goals for continuing to provide decent housing and a suitable living environment for our community, and also within that consolidated plan, just an outline goal of how to expand economic opportunities for those low moderate income households. Strategic plan, it's a three- or five-year plan. It's embedded within the consolidated plan, and again, it just probably gets into a little more specificity of activities we might do with how to meet our CDBG goals. The one document that comes to Council and our advisory board on an annual basis, as stated here, is the Annual Action Plan. And this is where the rubber hits the road, as we say, because this one-year plan actually outlines the activities that we're going to do in the upcoming year using CDBG funds. So, this is where we identify that, okay, we have an ongoing housing rehabilitation program. Let's say we get $500,000 allocation for the fiscal year. This is where we say, well, we're going to spend $300,000 of that on our housing rehab program. And then we can identify other things, again, like the summer camp program. We say that we're going to spend 35, 40, and we also are able to recover some of our administrative costs, and so that would come out of that pot of funds that was allocated to the city in the beginning of the year. So, the way the process works is that staff usually just does a first cut on it based on historic approvals from the board and from the advisory board. We present that to the advisory board, the Citizens Advisory Task Force, and they make a recommendation which eventually comes to this body, City Council, and you make the final decision on how the allocation is distributed. Again, meeting all of HUD rules about limits on what you can spend for any particular activity. Other documents, Assessment of Fair Housing, which we completed in March of last year, that's done about every five years in advance of that consolidated action plan, which I failed to mention was also adopted just in this past year by a previous council. The other document, and really the reason why we're here today, is for the Comprehensive Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. This is just basically the end-of-year report. This is where we make a statement to HUD about what we've done in the past year, what we've accomplished, the amount of funds that we used, what we used it on, and how we're doing with meeting our objectives and goals within that five-year plan. So, as an annual report, the period that it covers is our fiscal year. So, this annual report will cover the period from October 1st of 2021 to September 30, 2022. Again, its purpose is to describe the activities that we've completed or undertaken during this time period, and the report also provides an update on city's progress in implementing CDBG programs. In the past year, CDBG funds were used for the following: housing rehab, rehabilitation, as I mentioned, the first-time home buyer assistance, assistance, public service, youth activities, public service grants, that's redundant, home buyer assistance that's consistent with the second bullet, and planning administration. Again, planning administration includes administration for housing activities, staff time, ads for public meetings, and public outreach. The administration for housing activities, if I would just get into a little more detail about that, that's where, once we have a qualified homeowner and home for our rehab program, we retain the services of a consulting team who has a housing expert or housing inspector on staff. And what the housing inspector does is, they're very knowledgeable in the CDBG rules and programs, so they know what work will qualify for CDBG funding. They go into a home, they create a scope of work, and the scope of work would include things like, you need a new roof. That roof has been breached. You will need to replace maybe the trusses on that roof. They will look in the kitchen. The cabinets are falling off the wall. There's mold behind the wall. Those things will qualify and will need to be remediated. So, that's their job. That's one that we retain a housing consultant to complete for the city. Then, of course, during the course of work, as the contractors are doing the repair, in addition to city building inspectors looking at it, our consultant, they're overseeing to make sure that the work is being completed as stated in the scope of service that we've signed with the contractor and with the homeowner. So, that's just a little more detail about what that administration for housing activities is. So, this is where we list our accomplishments for the housing rehab program. We completed 20 homes with an expenditure of $571,535. Again, we assisted one homeowner, one new homeowner, through the first-time home buyer program for an expenditure of $10,000. For public service, youth activities, that's summer camp and other rec activities, we were able to assist 62 students to attend some or all of summer camp for a total of $25,000. And again, the grant administration monitoring of this, which again includes the administration of the housing activities, staff time, our ads for public meetings, public outreach, and that's for a total of $81,000. So, overall, this just sums up all the activities we were able to complete. The expenditure through the CDBG program using CDBG funds was $676,460. Also, within the annual report, we mentioned that we've started the new cycle of housing rehab program. I believe we've just completed the bids and are waiting to sign contracts with the homeowners on the scope of service. We have, within the first-time home buyer program, we have two that are hopefully would come to completion, and we would be able to assist them. And right now, also, as I mentioned before, through the public service grant program using CDBG COVID funds, we have contracts with Flagler Cares and Family Life Center to conduct their work to be able to help some extra households and persons using those CDBG COVID funds. The Citizens' Advisory Task Force, your advisory board for the CDBG program, did meet in December 7th at a public hearing. They did recommend that City Council approve this consolidated annual performance and evaluation report. That's the CDBG Annual Report. So, here we are at the public workshop. This will be on your regular business meeting for approval, and that should give us time to meet the deadline of submission to HUD by December 29th. And I'll be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Mr. Papa, quick question. You mentioned that we have contracts with Flagler Cares and the Family Life Center, but I don't see any detail regarding contribution to either organization in the activities of this past year. Is that because we're doing that in the future, or?
Yes, sir. We just started. I believe we signed the contracts in September, so they're in the first quarter of doing. So, any accomplishments that they might have, we will report in next year's caper.
Very good. And the Citizens Advisory Task Force are made up of volunteers that sit and review all of this information and make a recommendation?
Yes, sir.
And how many members on that force?
It can float. The main, the stable population for that board are the seven members of the planning board, city's planning board. The other half of that board are composed of members from the Flagler County Affordable Housing Advisory, the AHAQ.
Advisory Committee.
Advisory Committee, thank you. But those members who are also residents of Palm Coast.
Right.
So, yes, there are two, but they sit together to form the Citizens Advisory Task Force.
And I make note of it because of the former chair of both of those committees in the past, we've worked together. But the reason I bring it up is that I would extend an invitation to any eligible volunteers. But the reason I bring it up is that I would extend an invitation to any eligible volunteers that would like to participate in this process. I mean, this is extremely important. Hopefully, the magnitude of the funding will increase as we move forward into the future. But the allocation of the funding is, is really decided by, by the groups that volunteer for these committees. So I, I would hope that you'll have lots of people wanting to participate. So with that, I would ask, are there questions from city council members?
No questions from me, but I do echo the mayor's sentiment. Thank you.
I have a few questions, and I think that this program is vital, and I appreciate the work that you're doing to further it. I, I think that we should take the best advantage of the funds considering it is HUD funding. So my question, I do have some questions regarding the funding itself. It looks like the really high-level figure of $81,000 is generally for staff. Can we see a further breakdown of that?
We can, and I, I would have to get you the details.
Because I mean, if $10,000 can help a first-time homebuyer, it seems to me that every penny is important. So I would like to see a further breakdown of what's being.
Yes, ma'am. We can, we can break that down for you.
And then specifically for our aging population with aging homes, are we doing something to specifically reach out to that population, being that they're, they may not be tech-savvy, may not be on social media, something that we're specifically doing to reach out to those folks because their homes are deteriorating? And in that vein, is there a breakdown of the age groups that we are assisting with regards to home rehabilitation to make sure that we are focusing monies in, specifically to that population?
There, there are actually a lot of questions and answers within that statement, so I will, I'll try to do my best with this. The, the way our program is set up, it's a first time, it's a first qualified, first-served program. And that's just by HUD's rules. That is, you come in as a household, we don't give preference points if you're elderly or disabled. That's just the way that the program is set up. And by, by HUD rules, we cannot, unless we create a specific program that says this is specifically just for the elderly. And that, that's not been the case in, in the past. So that's the first thing. The other part of it is that I, I will attest that, looking at the demographics when, which are part of the report, that when we seek reimbursement, we include the demographics of, of who we've served. Majority, if not significant majority, are for households over 65. And I will tell you that a lot of them are single-person households also. That doesn't mean we don't serve or haven't been able to have households that were more than one person, but I will just let you know that a lot of them are single-family households, elderly. So I think we are getting that. A, a recommendation that did come from the Citizens Advisory Task Force in the past year is that the thinking that a lot of our elderly households, like you mentioned, are not tech-savvy and still might rely on, let's say, a paper utility bill. And so we will work with our utilities and communications that we provide the information on our housing programs within the newsletter that's also sent out to, through the utility bill, so that they, they may be able to have this information. Another part of that is that the county has sort of a parallel program to CDBG, and that's called the, the SHIP program. We get, we refer clients, potential clients, to each, to each other, because we have limited funds, they have limited funds, and we just want to make sure that no funds go unspent. So when they do get the client, one thing that they'll do is they'll also refer them to us so that, to see if we have any funds. If they've tapped out their funds, they'll send them to us to see if we have anything available, and we'll do the same thing. And since their SHIP program is housed within their social service department, or I think it's called Human Services now, when they get that call, then obviously, you know, if it's, we're able to cover a lot of, a lot of the county, with those who call in to Human Services looking for help with either, and, and now we only offer housing, we have our homeownership, we're not able to assist in, in any way with rental assistance. But if there's someone who might qualify for CDBG assistance, they do get referred to us too. So we get calls from, directly to us and through references from, from the county also, through their Human Services Department.
My last question, it looks like the grant was less than the expenditures, if I'm reading it correctly. Where did the, where did those extra monies come from?
Sure, yes, ma'am. Part of it too is that, you know, sometimes there's carryover from previous years, so there's a portion of that. But the other thing is that within the housing rehab program, we have a clawback clause. The amount of assistance you get sits as a quiet lien on your property. Let's say you got $50,000 in assistance for home repair. There's going to be a lien as part of this program on your, on your home. And that lien is there so that if you sell within the first five years, the, the program, the program, not the city, the program, the, the funds go back to the program, is able to recover that $50,000 so that we can redistribute it again as part of the program. The forgiveness starts with year six. After you complete year six, 20% of it's forgiven. By the time year 10 come, comes, that's 100% forgiven. And so if you stay in the house for 10 years, you're, the, the lien goes away. But that's where some of the extra funds come from. I think we had two in the past year where someone sold their home before the forgiveness clause kicked in.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, Jose, I appreciate everything that you do, you do through your program. However, I have always had a concern about the first-time homebuyers program. And I had a concern when I saw that there was only one family that was helped through the first-time homebuyer program. Can you explain why? I don't know what your budget is. I think you mentioned that it might be up to $500,000, is it?
That's for the entire program.
For the entire program. So how much of that is allotted to the first-time homebuyer program?
Sure. The amount allotted by, through, through advisement of the advisory board, again, was, was $100,000. So we had $100,000 available to assist.
You have $100,000?
Yes, ma'am. Any first-time homebuyers.
And?
Within, within the, within the activity itself, there is a limit of up to $35,000 per home. And this, we will not, the program does not buy a mortgage for a first-time homebuyer. It is there to assist with either down payment or closing costs. So any homebuyer would still need to go out and get their own mortgage. They'd still probably need to have a certain amount of, with housing costs, they would probably still need to have a certain amount of funds available for down payment or for closing costs. What we'll do is supplement sort of that gap of, I can get into this, I'm like with the, with the, with the Habitat home that we, we were able to assist, they were, of course, they got their mortgage, I believe through Habitat, and then there's, they received some assistance from the county, but then there were still, but there's also a cap on what the county SHIP program can, can provide as assistance. So there was still that gap, and that's where the $10,000 from the CDBG program kicked in.
I'm also a bit familiar with the SHIP program. So I know that they give a annual budget of, I think this year was a little bit over $1 million for the SHIP program through the Mid-Housing Program. So I'm, I have people constantly asking me, is there a first-time homebuyer's program? And with the market being the way that it is right now, there are so many people in this community that have a difficulty purchasing homes. So they are looking for these programs to be available to them and also to work for them. And oftentimes, I don't see where the programs work for these individuals to be able to purchase a home. And that's why I'm trying to figure out what it is about this program that can be changed or, or, or done so that these people are able to purchase homes and not become homeless. Many of them are so close to becoming homeless that I'm sure that you know that. And I also deal with a lot of homeless veterans, and my concern is that these veterans, these military families, should not have to become homeless. So I feel the need that we, as a community, we need to figure out ways that the criteria that needs to be met for housing in this community, we need to figure out a criteria that's going to work for these people that would like affordable homes that they can move in and have for their family.
I appreciate that, councilwoman. One of the things, there, the, the conversation is, is constant and consistent with our, with our advisory task force. If I was to put any limitations on it, again, one thing is that we receive $500,000 for the entire program. There are other activities that we fund with it, and actually with, with first-time homebuyers program, it's seen as a public service by HUD and not as a, a housing activity. And so in their view, they're subject to that cap of 15% of the entire budget. The $75,000 per year, if we receive $500,000 in allocation, we would be limited to using $75,000 of, and that would, for, because it's a public service. So if you did do that, then you're looking at also impacting some other activities. And they, they've tried to find this balance with the other activities.
Well, I, I think my biggest concern is that when I see a $500,000 budget and only $10,000 that goes towards first-time homebuyer program, that concerns me. I don't want to hold up the meeting, Mr. Jose, is it?
Uh, yes, Jose's fine, yes.
But I would like to, if possible, sit with you and discuss it a little bit.
That would be fine, yes, ma'am.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Papa, for the presentation. And for a council member, I could also recommend that, part of that discussion is your liaison responsibility, if, that you've accepted, I think, through the, the County Affordable Housing Ad-Hoc Committee. I think you could make a, a big impact by sharing your thoughts there because there's a crossover of membership between the County Affordable Housing Ad-Hoc Committee and the Citizens Advisory Task Force. So I think you could, your, your voice would be welcomed and your thoughts would be well-received and translated from, from one committee to another. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Absolutely, and that's why I chose to be on the committees that I will be involved with. Thank you, mayor.
Very good. Any further comment? Mr. Papa, thank you very much for the presentation, and we now will move on to the next section of our agenda, which is final public participation for today's meeting. Are there any members of the public that would like to come forward and address city council on any items that were not previously discussed in this morning's workshop?
Robert McDonald, Palm Coast. During the presentation for the transition between the Green Lion and the new restaurant, part of the expenses was that the city was still going to incur 50% of the water bill. If my memory serves me correct, and only Jason is going to be able to tell me whether I'm right or wrong, their water bill, when the Green Lion owned it, and we were paying the water bill, was an astronomical amount of money. I don't remember the exact amount per month, but it was astronomical. And I brought up the fact that the water company should come in and check to see if the meter is accurate or not. And if the meter is not accurate because the city owned the facility, the city should be responsible for putting in a new water meter. Well, my question is, why should the city, if we, if we're renting this out, why should we be responsible for 50% of a water bill of a restaurant? We don't pay any other restaurant's water bill, so why should we pay this? I mean, I understand that we own the, the building, and the water meter is part of the building. Well, if the water meter is part of the building and we, the tenant is going to pay the electric, then why should this tenant not pay the water bill? But before the, before the January deadline, I think the city should come in and have somebody come in from the water company and check the meter, make sure it's accurate, and then the owner of the restaurant or the tenant of the restaurant should then be responsible for paying the water bill. Because we were all barking because somebody back when came up with a ridiculous amount of rent. Well, now we've kind of evened the playing field, but I don't think that the citizens of the city should be responsible for any part of a water bill. I mean, that, that's ridiculous. Nobody pays my water bill, nobody pays your water bill, so why should we pay a tenant's water bill? I mean, I think that's ridiculous. So I really believe that the city should check out the water meter because technically that's our water meter, that the water meter doesn't belong to the tenant, it belongs to the city. So if it belongs to the city, then we're responsible for it.
Thank you for your, thank you for your comment. And Mr. DiLorenzo, you have a note to, to follow up on that. Thank you. Are there any other, yes, ma'am?
Hi, Denise Calderwit, a citizen of Palm Coast. And I just want to thank Councilwoman Pontieri and Ms. Hyder, and thank you for the great questions that you just brought up. It's eye-opening and fantastic, and you took my speech away in presentation, so I thank you. It's, it's a first to have great questions and great, you know, put, put those kinds of questions to the staff, because for 20 years, I've been coming to these meetings and hearing the same thing, that we're a new city and we have, we have to get ourselves acclimated, we have to get our, our, our goals straight and our visions straight, and, but we never put, you know, pen to paper in action. What seems to happen is, we take public comment and we respond to the numbers of people who show up and say, this is what we want at this time. Even though these documents are beautiful, this is a beautiful document, and, you know, Ms. Bevan, I want to thank you, and I hope that you, as a person who's been here this whole time, as a city staff.
Well, the speaker, please, please address.
Okay, well, as a city staff, you know, you actually put the budget to this document because number five, to ensure a safe community for our citizens and visitors while providing affordable, enjoyable options for cultural, educational, recreational, leisure time activities. That's goal number five, okay? And number six is to develop and implement staff, you know, that would be responsive to the needs. Volusia County has what's called the Echo Grant, and they've had it for over 40 years, and it's fantastic. And it's their, their tax dollar money that goes to the city, and then it's given out by an advisory board, and they fund all of their cultural heritage, recreational, they even include budgets for buildings, projects, and they pull that money, they match it with community development block grant funds, with money from parks and recreation, and that is their strategic plan, that's their master plan. The city of Palm Coast has plenty of master plans, they sit on a shelf, and the staff doesn't seem to know them, they can't seem to recall them, and they can't seem to, to pick them up and use them when the time comes. And, you know, Holland Park is an example, you know, the new park, Tennis Park is an example. What I beg the city to do is to take action with the new plan, if you are going to adopt a new Parks and Recreation Comprehensive Plan, to include a housing option, because you're going to have homeless people living in the parks, and live just like you had behind the library, because of what, you know, Council Hyder brought up, okay? And I don't hear the, the answers coming, you know, from the city. And just in my neighborhood alone, Burrows Drive has been told that they were having a neighborhood park there, and 34 years later, there still is not a neighborhood park there. And yet we have a big development that went across the street, and they paid humongous park impact fee monies, and when I've asked about it, there's no discussion of that community park, okay? So that's the kind of accountability that we're talking about.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other members of the public that would like to address city council at this time? Seeing no one come forward, I will close the public comment, the final public, public participation section of the agenda, and I will move forward to discussion by city council of matters not on the agenda. Any items?
I just, Jason, if you could come and explain?
I just, Jason, if you could come and explain why we are splitting that water bill, because I think that once you hear the answer, you'll.
You have a, I'm sorry, Councilman, you have a business meeting coming up following this one.
Do you want to do it then?
Would you prefer just to keep it all together? Would you mind?
I just thought he could, in a few sentences, just answer his question.
I leave it to you.
Yeah, either way, I was going to address it at the business meeting, but, all right, so several, we've done several things that Mr. McDonald has pointed out. We are actually, there's a single meter at the clubhouse now, but it serves the clubhouse building, it serves the ice machine and water machine, and it serves the rowing club who washes down their skulls every day after use. We're splitting that into three separate meters, and the building will be on its own meter, the water and ice will be on its own meter, and the rowing club will be on its own meter. One thing that we need to consider for the building itself, and we did have it looked at, is we would have had to replumb the whole building, but we have 54,000 golfers coming through that clubhouse that are using the bathroom.
Right.
Right? And there's no way to determine when you're using the bathroom for restaurant use or you're using the bathroom for golf use, so there is definitely a portion of the water that is our responsibility.
Great, thank you.
Very good.
That's all I have, I just didn't want him to have to wait.
Okay, council members?
I'm going to say this over the next few meetings, just because I do think it's important. When public, when our citizens come up and speak to us, I know a lot of you feel like you go home, you're not listened to, that's been a sentiment that's been echoed, I would urge everybody to fill out a comment card. I know it's an extra step, I know you may feel like we don't pay attention to them, but what I have specifically asked of staff is that certain things that I would like to assist our residents with, certain things that pique my interest, certain things that may be related to committees that I'm on, I would like to be copied on communications between the staff and the residents that fill out those cards. So I'll continue to say it at the end of the meetings, if you don't mind, Mayor, just to urge citizens who may not be present now or in the next meeting or the next meeting, please fill out comment cards, and then I will relay to city staff being copied on some of those issues that I can assist. So I would, again, just urge, please fill out the comment cards, don't just come up to the podium.
And just for sunshine purposes, so whatever you're copied on, City Council as a whole will be copied on as well, so we'll all be, you know, up to speed. So thank you for your comment. Council member?
Yes, I'd like to just say that I am new here to the council, and I am looking forward to working with each and every one of our staff here at the city of Palm Coast. I've met several of you, and I am looking forward to working with you as we move forward. Thank you.
Just as a final note, we've talked about several volunteer opportunities today, and the city will broadcast information and a request for volunteers to serve on two committees, which are important to the city. One of them is the Citizens Advisory Committee, which is a recommending committee to our transportation planning organization. We've had a gentleman retire from the committee, so we are looking and will publish an announcement searching for a new member or new members. And also, number two, we are searching for additional members for the B-PAC Committee, which is the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee. Mr. Papa, I don't know if you're still in the room, did I get that correctly? Good enough. So anyway, the opportunity for members of the community to volunteer and assist the city is available, and I reach out to all of our residents to please step forward and find out about it and pay attention to our Palm Coast Connect, where I'm sure the information will be available, and step up and become a part of all that we do. So I thank you for that. And with that, I would ask the city attorney, are there any final comments for today?
I have nothing.
I would ask the city manager, are there some final comments for today?
I'll reserve my comments for the business meeting, if that's okay, ma'am.
Very good, thank you. Then with that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn the workshop, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, we are adjourned and we will move. Let me ask City Council, do you need a break for a minute before we move to our business meeting?
I'm good.
Everybody okay, staff? Okay, then we'll move right into our, the workshop is now adjourned, and now I will, adjourned, now we will open our business meeting. So again, welcome to the city of Palm Coast, City Council Business Meeting. Today is Tuesday, December the 13th, 2022, it is 10:33 a.m. We are in the community wing of City Hall. So formally, I guess I will ask us to please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk give us a roll call, please?
Mayor Alvin.
Present.
Vice Mayor Danko.
Present.
Councilmember Carly Pontieri.
Present.
Councilmember Hyder.
Present.
Councilmember Clufus is absent.
Thank you. I will, we have some new members, okay, in the audience today. So public participation, in order for the city staff to be able to respond to your questions or concerns, thank you, council member, please fill out comment cards with your contact information. The comment cards can be found on the table, near the agendas, or available from the Communications and Marketing Director seated in the back of the room. Public participation shall be held in accordance with Section 286.0114 of the Florida statutes, and pursuant to the City Council's meeting policies and procedures, each speaker shall at the podium provide their name and may speak for up to three minutes. The public may provide comments to the City Council relative to matters not on the agenda at the times indicated in this agenda. Following any comments from the public, there may be discussion by the City Council. When addressing the City Council on specific enumerated agenda items, speakers shall direct all comments to the mayor, make their comments concise and to the point, not speak more than once on the same subject, not by speech or otherwise, delay or interrupt the proceedings or the peace of the City Council, obey the orders of the mayor or the City Council, and not make any irrelevant, impertinent, or slanderous comments while addressing the City Council, which pursuant to council rules, shall be considered disorderly. Any person who becomes disorderly or who fails to confine his or her comments to the identified subject or business shall be cautioned by the mayor and thereafter must conclude his or her remarks on the subject within the remaining designated time limit. Any speaker failing to comply as cautioned shall be barred from making any additional comments during the meeting and may be removed as necessary for the remainder of the meeting. Portions of the agenda at the times indicated by the chair during the meeting. Members of the public may make comments during the public comment portion of the meeting during the times indicated by the chair during the meeting. With that, I would invite the public to come forward, and is there anyone in the public that would like to address City Council at this time? Yes, ma'am?
Denise Calderwood, thank you very much for explaining the rules. And I, you know, it's very intimidating when you come to a meeting where there's an agenda, but yet the rules for the city or for the public are actually more broken down and visible, saying, you know, talking about, you know, the disclaimer. And that's concerning because, you know, the city staff doesn't seem to have some kind of rules like that to follow for decorum as far as their behavior and the way they treat people. And this Saturday was a prime example during the beautiful event at Town Center. You know, I personally tried to pull our vehicle up there to participate. I had made phone calls to the city staff, I went to the Palm Coast Parks and Recreation Community Center, the main building, and asked about participating in Saturday's event. Never received a phone call, never received an email, never notified people. And then I was referred, oh, it might be on our website, and use Palm Coast Connect, okay? I don't use the computer as much as I should, you know, because I'm out in the community dealing with the problems that everyday people have. I don't sit behind a desk, and that is exactly what we did. You know, I felt like Rudolph the reindeer at the event, because I was told by city staff that I could not pull our vehicle, which was an information sharing vehicle about suicide and mental health awareness, because the need in Flagler County is so great, and those agencies like Flagler Cares, you know, and Flagler County Human Services say we don't have the ability or the resources or the money to help people. And I would question the Community Development Block Grant saying that they just recently gave money to Flagler Cares in September, because we've had several people call Flagler Cares and ask for direct help, and they said they have no money and they have no resources to give out, and that they're only an advocacy group, okay? So this is why I'm taking the time to advocate, to tell you that the advocacy and the groups that, what is on paper is not necessarily what is actually existing in our community, okay? And for people to become aware, to actually know your community, okay? Those people who went door to door, who those people who listen to the citizens actually hear what they say, not what the paperwork says, okay? And if I need to just keep coming and keep getting up here and talking under public comment, I will be the new Alan Lowe and show up at these meetings, okay? I don't feel it's necessary. I think staff, you know, do a good job, however they get swayed by whoever is leading Flagler County, and I don't know, and I don't think it's the citizens, because these meetings tend to put people down, tend to make people feel like they're not important, and that statement about making the comments to people, you know, is eye-opening, okay? So wake up, smell the roses, people, this is your city, and we have major problems here. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment.
And the solution lies with, we still have 11 seconds left, right? The solution lies with the leadership that has now been elected to hold the city staff accountable and to hold the budget to the city.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any other members of the public that would like to address City Council at this time? Seeing no one come forward, I will close this section of the agenda for public participation, and I will move forward. We have minutes of the City Council from the December 6th, 2022 business meeting, and I asked the clerk, I assume they require an approval?
Yes.
So I will ask, because we have new City Council members, have you all had a chance to review those minutes?
There was a motion that I made during the last meeting that's not reflected on the minutes. It was a motion regarding appointment of vice mayor. It does need to be added.
You can request an amendment to the minutes to be amended as you request, and then you can do the motions thereafter to approve the minutes as amended.
So would you rephrase your motion to approve the minutes to be amended as mentioned by the council member?
Absolutely.
Okay, very good. So I have a motion to approve with the amendment, may I have a second?
Second.
I have a second as well from Councilperson Pontieri. Is there any additional discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Does the clerk have the count?
Yes, motion passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Four to zero.
Very good. So I'll continue on with my explanation of the meeting. Before we begin the council business portion of the meeting, I want to take a moment to discuss City Council processes relating to approval or denial of items presented to council at all business meetings. For each workshop, City Council receives a comprehensive overview of each item, and at that time, it is council's opportunity to provide opinions and ask questions on each item. Just as a reminder, items that are quasi-judicial in nature will require council to base their decisions on only what is presented at the scheduled public hearings conducted at the scheduled business meetings. The purpose of a business meeting is for council to review and weigh all the evidence and take action with decisions based on all information presented, both at the prior workshop and today. With that, I would ask the City Council to, let's see, do we have public comment?
We did public comment.
We did already, we're finished, right?
Right. We're on item number.
So item F, so I would ask council to go ahead and read Resolution F2 into the record, please.
This is a resolution concerning the Master Services Agreement for Parks and Recreation Master Plan, a resolution of the City Council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida approving a master services agreement with Berry Dunn for the development of a comprehensive Parks and Recreation Master Plan, providing authorization to execute, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for implementing actions, and providing for an effective date.
Very good. So we've just heard and had a question-answer period in the prior workshop regarding this item. Any additional questions come to mind at this time? Very good. Any last comments from staff at this time?
No, we are good, thank you.
Very good. So I would open up this item for the public. Is there anyone that would like to comment on the item at this time?
Hi, Denise Calderwood. The plan is fantastic. Palm Coast, over the years, have had beautiful plans, but when it comes to actually implementing those plans once they're written, they have not been accomplished. I can't say enough how much I've sat on the sidelines, have been quiet, have watched the plans being written, the consultants hired, the beautiful reports being written, and then what gets done is the group of citizens comes here, comes forward, expresses that we want a pickleball court, and overnight, we put $8 million towards pickleball. Yes, it's the fastest-growing sport there is in the United States right at this moment, and that is because we have an aging population. We have an aging population in Palm Coast, and then several years ago, Palm Coast was so proud to say that they were a community for a lifetime, which was a funded federal grant that came, you know, community for a lifetime for citizens. At that time, for three months, the advisory board that met actually did plans, the Palm Coast made signs, street signs that were very big so that you can actually read them when you can't see, when you age. We added streetlights, those things got done, and then at a six or seven meeting, the city manager comes in and cancels the meeting and says, we're no longer having the program, and yet, we say we're so proud to serve people. The annual report that you have from the Parks and Recreation Department just stated that 2,600 activities, individual activities, were held at the community center, and at the same time, 1,309 rentals occurred, okay? So that means people paid additional monies to use the Palm Coast Community Center. Where did that money go? It went into the budget. Those are the things that should be looked at in the master plan and actually dig down deep and hold accountability to what has been done, what we need for the future. And like I said, my neighborhood still doesn't have a neighborhood park, I've asked about it, our citizens want it, if we need to pack this room, we should have it because across the street now, 4,000 people are going to be moving into that neighborhood. And the developer paid them pack fees, okay? I brought up an issue with the now city fire chief to say that, you know, we can have a combined park, and maybe the firemen can start using it and do something because the fire department is right next to it, and then there's a church that's right next to it. So everybody could benefit from that park and then the new community. These are the things that should be discussed and done with the community, pull the community in to the planning. And when you have community budgeted meetings, let the citizens know that those meetings exist somehow, because the citizens never get that message, and city staff say, oh, go to Palm Coast Connect, we'll connect you. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other members of the public that would like to comment on this item at this time? Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public comment, come back to the dais. Are there any, is there any additional discussion or questions regarding this item?
I do have one comment, and maybe a question maybe for Brittany. I see here that there's going to be public involvement, so to address the concern that was just at the podium, in what manner have you all spoken with this vendor with regards to how they're going to get the public involved?
Yeah, that's a great point. So part of it is going to be the needs assessment questionnaires, we'll work with focus groups, stakeholders, and community partners to put those questions together. The surveys will be direct mailed to select households, but also put out onto a website where it is open for the general community to provide their input.
And where can residents go to kind of keep an eye on when that survey is available?
We will provide that on the city website.
And then my other question was, in this assessment that they're going to do, will there be or can there be added, if it hasn't been contemplated yet, a section where we can look at other facilities that can generate revenue like the community center does, so that, again, we can look at what the ROI is long-term?
Yeah, that'll go back to the scope of work with that cost-benefit analysis and the level of service, so they will be analyzing current facilities at the same time that they are, identifying opportunities for future facilities as well. And we'll. And we'll ensure that there's a robust campaign that goes out as we're going through this process to make sure we're communicating to the public every step of the way.
Thank you.
Answer your question?
Yes.
Very good. Any additional discussion?
No.
So with that, I have no questions. I would ask for a motion regarding the Resolution number F, letter F, number two.
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion from Vice Mayor Danko to approve the resolution. Is there a second?
A second.
Councilperson Pontieri has given us a second. Is there any additional discussion? So I would ask for a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Danko?
Yes.
Councilmember Carly Pontieri?
Yes.
Councilmember Hyder?
Yes.
Mayor Alvin?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero.
Thank you. We move next to item F3, and I will ask council to read that into the record for us, please.
This is a resolution concerning the concession agreement, concession lease agreement for the Palm Harbor Golf Course, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida approving the terms and conditions of the concession agreement with Loopers at Palm Harbor Golf Club LLC for food and beverage services at the Palm Harbor Golf Course, authorizing the city manager or designated to execute said agreement, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for implementing actions, and providing for an effective date.
Mr. DiLorenzo, you want to add something to your prior presentation at this time?
Yes, sir. Here are some of the financial matters that you asked about. The column on the left is the, under our current agreement, the base rent was $600 a month currently, which generated $7,200 annually. The water and sewer bill is, this is on an annual average, about $24,000, and you heard me describe the changes that we're making to further refine the costs at the clubhouse itself. The electric for the entire facility, clubhouse facility, not the golf course, but for the clubhouse facility, is approximately $6,000 annually. Existing council members, you'll remember that we engaged our local company Watt Core that installed a metering system on the kitchen, and so the kitchen will now be, the leased premises will now be charged their actual cost for electric through that new metering system. So we will have no cost related to the restaurant or concession services. And then the city was also paying the entire amount of the propane, which was running approximately $600 a month or $7,200 a year. So our costs previously were about $37,200. That is an estimate. It also doesn't include maintenance you would expect from a shared facility, but it's some rough numbers to help you see that, you know, our expenses were about $30,000 annually towards the concession. And now with the new agreement, the rent has increased to $17,982 in the first year. We have that split of utilities 50-50, but I anticipate this number, our expense will go down now that the new metering is complete, and we have no other costs. The other costs of electric, propane, telecom, and internet are all provided by the new tenant. And over the first five years, if you add the 3% annual increase, you see that that number grows, the revenue grows a little bit each year, about $600 or so each year over the first five years, and will continue into the future. So I hope that answered your previous questions about the cost to operate the facility.
And your comment, I just want to offer a compliment. So this would come under the area of economic development. So I know that you were able to kind of bring in a small company by the name of Watt Core, and now you have creatively used that company to help us with this agreement and this new business going forward. That company, if I remember, employed a dozen or perhaps a couple of dozen local Palm Coast residents, and I look forward to the Loopers Enterprise employing local city or certainly county residents as well. So this is a small example of how, if we do work together, we can help ourselves move forward. So again, my compliments to your creative team, so thank you for that. And I would ask City Council, any final questions regarding the agreement?
I'm just happy to see we turned a corner on this. It was a difficult process, no doubt, and I'm glad that we're no longer subsidizing a business. Businesses are meant to stand on their own. Good businesses do stand on their own, and I'm sure the, sure our citizens are going to be very, very happy with this new restaurant. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
So I know we discussed a lot of the items in the presentation during the workshop. Some of the things that I wanted to say for this specific meeting was regarding the lease, some of the terms of the lease. I read through the lease and noticed that, and perhaps I missed it, but I don't think I did, there doesn't appear to be a provision for late fees if the rent's not paid timely, and also a provision for repair to HVAC. I understand that this is a shared facility between what will be Loopers and the city. HVAC repairs can be costly, so it appears to me the lease is silent on that, and it is something that needs to be inserted, as well as a late fee provision, so that there, we can avoid any ambiguities or vagueness issues down the road.
So Section 1B, and I believe you have that in front of you, has a generalization about the maintenance and repair and replacement of equipment of the leased premises, and I believe you are correct that HVAC is not directly pointed out there, or mechanical equipment, but it's just generalized as equipment. And I'll describe equipment in this way. The leased premises has its own mechanical equipment that's owned by the current lessee. I know that Loopers and the current lessee have been negotiating on some of the equipment remaining. I'm not sure about that piece, but either way, they will be replacing it with their own equipment, and they'll be responsible for maintaining and replacing any equipment that fails. As far as, yes, ma'am?
No, I just suggest maybe an addendum that states exactly what fixtures the new tenant will be bringing in and installing. That way, it's very clear what the city owns versus what Loopers will own, and therefore be responsible to maintain.
We do have a listing from our previous tenant that we've done. We do have a fixture list. We don't have that here, because obviously, they're not moved in yet, but the intent is that any mechanical equipment that serves the clubhouse as a whole, because the city operates out of it also, and not specific to the leased premises, will be the responsibility of the city as the landlord to maintain. So for example, the HVAC system, which covers the entirety of the clubhouse, would be, the city would do the repair to that if something were to happen. But all the mechanical equipment and other things inside, there's a couple items that may or may not remain, that are city equipment that we have a listing for. Those would be maintained by the city, too. I mean, there is a computer, I don't even know if they're going to keep that or not. There's a couple other things.
So, and I hate to be the thorn, but that, the statements that were just made are contradictory. So if the HVAC services the entire facility, and it's going to be the responsibility of the city, then it's a responsibility of the city. But if Loopers is bringing its own HVAC system, like was just represented by Mr. DiLorenzo, then it sounds like they would be responsible for that system. So that's what I'm talking about, just some clarity with regards to those responsibilities, because those are expensive fixes, repairs, replacements, and this has the potential to be a 20-year lease because of the renewals. So in that 20 years, I would assume that the HVAC is going to need to be addressed.
Yeah, we'll be happy to work on that with Loopers. There is both. Council is correct. There is mechanical equipment that's a responsibility of ours, because we have offices in the building as well, and then we have the entryway where you, you know, pay your fees and that kind of stuff. So we have a portion that's ours, but then they have their own equipment as well. We will refine, refine that. And then to your second point about late fees, that seems an appropriate addition to the agreement, and I think we'll just look for consent from Loopers, that they'll be okay with that and to make that change in the contract as well.
Yeah, and I don't want to negotiate a lease from the dais, but some type of percentage, if not paid by a certain date, certainly needs to be added into the lease prior to it being finalized.
Yes, ma'am.
So would you accept for City Council to finalize those elements in the lease, so that we avoid negotiation of the lease from the dais and work with staff and also with the applicant?
Certainly.
Review.
Give the city staff.
City staff.
Give the city staff, yeah.
Correct, just so we kind of keep that flow going, and obviously make you aware of the details that they come up with. Would that work?
Yes, please.
Good, very good, okay.
Thank you, Councilwoman Pontieri. I'd like to say that I did take the time to read through the lease agreement with Loopers and also took a look at all of the other submissions that were submitted. My feelings are that we have come up with a fairly good solution that will work for both the City of Palm Coast at this time and our new tenant that will be taking over at the Palm Coast Golf Course, and I'm looking forward to making this work and be of benefit to the community, City of Palm Coast, and also to our new tenant.
Very good. Any additional comment? So I would open this item up to the public. Are there any members of the public that would like to comment on this agenda item at this time? Seeing no one come forward, I will close public comment. Any final comments from City Council members?
Will happily make the motion to approve.
So I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Just a minute. Councilmember Danko, does that motion include a potential negotiation with city staff and the applicant on a increase for late rent payments?
As we just discussed.
So I have a motion to approve the resolution, provided there's an amendment regarding the late fee. Is there a second?
If I can just add to that, also the provision, the specificity with regards to some of the equipment, we can add that as well.
I'm not clear on that.
So the discussion that we had with regards to responsibility for maintenance, replacement, repair of equipment that's in the shared facility, that needs to be specified prior to...
So my understanding from council before is there is a listing of equipment that is the city's, and there is a listing of equipment that is known to be the current tenants', but we don't have a listing yet of what the new tenants would be. So you're suggesting a listing of what the new tenant would be bringing in?
Correct. When that determination is made, that being an addendum added to the lease agreement specifically stating what will be the responsibility of the city versus the responsibility of the tenant.
So there'd be two lists, so it'd be an inventory of each of the pieces of equipment?
Correct.
Okay. Let's go back and, I'm going to ask, Councilmember, would you withdraw your motion in favor of restating your motion?
Yeah, we can include that. It's, I don't know, having dealt with rental properties, I've never gotten a list of the tenant's property that, you know, might need re...
The point is well taken. In other words, so it's clear, so there's an inventory, and then there'd be an ongoing responsibility to it. So if you'd restate your motion?
Restate.
So the motion, as I understand it, is to approve the resolution with the addition of a negotiated late fee and also with detailed inventory lists of what the tenant's equipment and responsibility are and what the city's equipment and responsibilities are.
I'm good with that.
And the ability for the city staff or city manager to execute those changes in the agreement.
Sure.
Okay, I just don't want to have to bring an addendum with the list back before you guys again, which is a ministerial action.
I think you, staff, city manager understands the direction, so yes, that's the motion.
All right, so I have a motion on the dais. May I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Councilperson Pontieri. Any further discussion? So let's go ahead with a roll call.
Vice Mayor Danko?
Yes.
Councilmember Carly Pontieri?
Yes.
Councilmember Hyder?
Yes.
Mayor Alvin?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero.
Thank you. We move forward.
Mayor, excuse me, mayor. If you have an interest, James has a couple slides about the transition now that you've approved the new contract.
Okay, so, hold on a second.
Be quick.
It's not your pleasure, if you'd like to hear it now or...
Go ahead.
Yeah, just a couple of slides, not too many, so just...
And just so you understand my hesitancy, besides staff, we only have a handful of members, so what I was actually thinking about was, is there a way that you could share this with the public at large, so that there is a marketing initiative, so that we are making all of Palm Coast and all of Flagler County aware of this? So please practice on us, but assure me that you're going to spread this word, you know, far and wide, so everybody is aware of this wonderful new asset to the community.
Yes, yes, sir. Once your, once council is familiar with this today, we have a meeting this afternoon with communications to go over a full communications plan for transition to make sure that there's a comfort level with our customers at the golf course, and we continue to serve them the best we can while we're in transition. So go ahead, James.
Okay, so November, December, which is what we're into now, is that on November 30, the city manager met with Loopers, and just, was it just introductory kind of meeting? December 1, Nathan mentioned it earlier in the previous workshop, that the tenant, the existing tenant was sent a letter from the city. Then on December 6, we had an internal staff meeting to kind of discuss the maintenance and cleanout, then, and then along, on Monday morning, just this past Monday, Loopers and our city staff met just to kind of have better communication within themselves on the process of what will happen. Today, we had the presentation, and then as Jason just mentioned, we'll have a meeting this afternoon, kind of talk about our communication strategy with the public. So then extending on to January through to March, so 14th of January, the current tenant will end their business. January 15, we had, we'll have a food truck on service. We're meeting with the food truck tomorrow afternoon to kind of discuss location. Ultimate goal is to make sure that golfers still have food available while they're playing their rounds. Then the 16th, the lease commencement, along with potential alcohol services. And then also on the 16th, we'll be, we'll start looking at maintenance, repairs, and the cleanouts. That will all begin, very workload-dependent, as Jason mentioned earlier, you know, we have the issue with the roof, and then some stuff with the kitchen, we want to just double-check and everything before we get started, and then potentially, the new tenant could start their limited services, and then hopefully, March 1, we'll have full service to all our golf patrons and anyone in the county to come over.
And just be reminded, that'll be dependent on the CEO. And that's it.
Very good, I thank you.
Thank you.
So with that, I, well, we'll close the discussion and congratulations. All right, we now move to Agenda, letter G, Consent. Are there any items within the consent agenda that City Council would like to discuss at this time?
I'm sorry, what did you say, Virginia?
Nothing.
Oh.
Nothing.
Oh, I have none.
I just had a few questions. So I know on the consent agenda is the CBDG program approval that Mr. Papa presented during the previous meeting, and I just want to make sure that the approval of this is with the understanding that we will see a further breakdown of the $81,000 for the, what I consider, I guess, staff and managerial. So if we can be provided that as a part of this approval, I'd appreciate that.
Yes, that would be, that would be fine. I think that, I think Mr. Papa alluded to that, and based on my experience, so again, I'll reinforce it, that that information will be available in the public, so that you can see exactly how those monies were recommended, recommended to be spent by the Citizens Advisory Task Force, and then it will be up to this City Council to determine if they are, if we are in agreement with that. Okay. Okay? Very good.
And then the other question...
Very good.
And then the other, um, question that I had, and I think this is probably for Mr. Cody, um, with regards to the contract with McKim and Creed, there seems to not be any type of mechanism for oversight on making sure that whatever contractor is hired, um, is monitored as far as making sure the engineer's designs are followed through with. And I think that one of the issues that we've probably seen in contracts with the city, um, is that designs maybe are not being followed and are not being monitored during the process and then we are paying more in the backend to address those shortcomings. So if there can be some type of mechanism in the scope of work where the contractor is, or rather where the engineer is responsible to not monitor the contractors themselves, that's not their job, but to make sure that their designs are being followed by whomever is hired as the contractor.
So, just so I understand, so at the conclusion of a project, the project is, uh, which has been permitted, is, um, is, what's the word I'm looking for? Is, looked at, is, um, uh, reviewed by city staff to see if it is, uh, compliant and consistent with the plan and the engineering and all of that is, are you suggesting we do something over and above that?
I am, and the reason for that is, it, the, the contract does provide, I think at the bottom of page four, um, for a periodic.
I'm sorry, inspection was the word I'm looking for. There is a final inspection which, uh, details the plan, the engineering and the final product.
Correct, and, and obviously that's appropriate, but at that point, there's probably been a lot of work done and so if we're waiting until then, there can be delays, it could be costly, um, to have to maybe go back and unwind certain things that were not done correctly. So my suggestion is simply to add something very small in the scope of work that says that there either be a, a specific periodic monitoring to make sure that the designs are being, um, followed as provided. I mean, we're hiring the engineer for a reason, their design should be followed and, uh, rather than waiting until the end for that process to take place.
So is the question, um, I guess the, the, the first question is, are there periodic inspections done throughout the, the life, the timeline of a project?
Alex Blake, City Palm Coast Utility Engineer. Um, yes, there are daily inspections performed. Uh, in the case of this contract, as in many of these similar type of projects with these utilities, um, there is, uh, inspection coverage over multiple layers. Um, starting with myself, I'm present, uh, frequently on those project sites. Uh, I have a project manager that frequents those sites. There is a staff engineering inspector that is assigned to that project, will be there daily, performing daily reports. And we typically, our processes, we typically hold progress meetings once every two weeks. Uh, the consultant engineer is, uh, present at those meetings, um, does minutes, conducts the meetings, uh, and then issues those minutes. So we have a whole record of what's been done, an entire journal, if you will, of inspections from the start of the project to the end. Um, you also have the building department inspections included on this as well. So if you think about this particular project, which is a sludge de-watering, uh, it's a structure of mechanical devices and electrical components. So you have a structural component which will have a building inspection done on it or multiple inspections done. You have electrical components that'll have, uh, building inspections done. So there's multiple layers through that. Uh, the consultant will frequently be observing progress of construction because they're responsible, and if you look at the scope, they're responsible for, uh, basically keeping ledger of the, uh, the progress of the project. So since the engineer record is the one doing this, they have to certify the as-built drawings at the end of the project. In order for them to do that, they, they need to be an active participant throughout the construction project. It doesn't, uh, we're not stating that as, as exact as, uh, as this is being suggested as, you know, a defined task, but it's implicit because the, uh, the permitting for the project, uh, that, once the design is complete, that has to go to the Florida Department of Environmental Protection. Okay, so the engineer record has to complete that, send those documents in to, for us to get that permit. In order for that implement, this structure to be activated and put into service, that also has to be cleared through the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, which is again, is another step of the, um, engineer of record. So we have had no problems with this particular, uh, general language in these contracts and we've had, uh, this is, uh, again, a continuing engineering consultant that we've done multiple, uh, successful projects with over, probably well over 10 years.
Okay, so I appre- appreciate the, the information and to, uh, councilperson Pontieri's point, which I think is, is, is valid and a good one, there is the opportunity with some of these projects, I think one was, uh, brought up, uh, earlier in a meeting, um, the Belter project as an example, where you could run into unknowns and the project can actually change significantly, and I think Florida Park Drive was another example. Um, so having an oversight, um, certainly in the case of a project, not changing direction, but, but anomalies appearing or things that perhaps could not be forecast or predicted, I think is, um, is, is, is an excellent, you know, uh, should be a standard operating process. Now, I'll leave it to you to perhaps, uh, meet with city manager and discuss what kind of mechanisms might, how you might define those. I, I'm not sure that, that I know, but maybe you could have a further discussion and bring those back, um, to city council under, uh, councilperson comments for us to consider in the future.
Certainly, and I think my concern, and, and thank you mayor, is, um, with, if we're, if we are going to continue to kinda use these general contracts, which I think is a very smart thing to do, when you have a good contract, don't recreate the wheel. Um, but when we're paying somebody $262,000 for a scope of work, I think that it's a very valid request to say that they should be providing periodic, even if it's just milestone updates with regards to ensuring that the designs that we're paying for are being complied with by the contractor. That's just my suggestion.
Good. Thank you for that. Um, are there any other questions or comments regarding the consent from, uh, city council?
Just a quick question, you say you meet about every two weeks on these things?
Correct.
So you have no objections to anyone from council attending one of those meetings?
None.
Thank you.
Sing, just from the public, from the sunshine perspective singularly?
Yeah.
And, and if you would coordinate with city manager to make sure that we're compliant with all of that, just to make sure that there's no mis- misperception or conception of all of that.
Got it.
Very good, well, with that, I would, um, ask for a motion on the consent agenda.
I made it.
Second.
I have a motion from, uh, councilperson Danko to approve and a second by councilperson Pontieri. Is there any additional discussion by city council at this time? And does the clerk have a comment?
No, do we do public comment on this yet?
On the consent, I don't believe so, I did.
We usually do public comment at the beginning to see if there's anything that should be pulled off.
I did at the beginning, I believe.
Okay, all right, just making sure.
Do, do I need to confirm that with the clerk? Did I offer public comment on the consent agenda? I think I did.
I think that's why I was hesitant in that you were doing, um, councils first, but we hadn't opened it up to the public yet. I don't think it did.
Okay, so let me take this opportunity to, uh, invite the public to come and comment on our consent agenda today, so thank you for that.
Thank you. To the city attorney, Jean Dow, Palm Coast resident, came here for this. I want to thank Jose Papa and his staff. Uh, I would ask, and I'll write it out, could they put up, this is 10 years that we're in this program, the CBG, how much in grant money? Cause I know you love getting grant money, I heard it from the, uh, parks, get grant money. $500,000 is a lot of money. And I got up here a few months ago, I think, when Jose made the presentation. 20 families helped their homes, 62 scholarships for kids to go to camp, that would have, wouldn't have been there if it wasn't for that grant money. So 10 years of getting that, thank you Jose and everyone else. And I know, being a veteran, federal paperwork is a pain. Uh, I'd also want to repeat something I said a couple months ago. Thank you for worrying about the future of our water, that we have safe water treatment plants, the staff, thank you. And I'd like to thank the city for these things. First, I'll have a piece of paper, I'm not the best technology, about how much our budget is, $320 million. So we have $500,000 thanks to the hard work of that department and you, the council, will approve and monitor $320 million. It's just amazing. And last, yeah, I got time. I, there was a hot, hot debate on the budget in August, but in fact, the budget starts a lot earlier. I was at this meeting when our assessor was here in May, and it's great information he gave out. I hope he comes again this May, cause I'd like to see the difference. And I'd also like to thank the city for looking at and making it simple for me to understand the budget, sorry. I get nervous up here, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your comment. Are there any other members of the public that would like to address city council on this agenda item at this time? Seeing no one come forward, I, uh, will ask for a, um, motion.
I think we already made it.
Oh, sorry, we, we had both seconds, so all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? Does the clerk have the count?
Motion passes four to zero.
Very good. We move to the final section of our, uh, agenda and, does that qualify for public participation?
That was on the consent agenda.
Are there any members of the public that would like to comment to city council on any members, not, on any items not previously discussed on this agenda? Seeing no one from the public come forward, I will close this section of public participation. I will return to city council. Are there any items of discussion by city council members at this time?
I, I see that we're already beginning to schedule our next budget hearing, unbelievable as it is. So I know we discussed after the last round that we were gonna go a lot deeper this time and we were gonna literally sit down line by line with department heads and hold workshops and I just want to make sure we stay on that path, that we don't deviate from that. Other than that, I just want to say, you know, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, festive us for the rest of us, and I hope everybody enjoys the holiday season.
Thank you, councilperson.
I, I also second your, um, suggestion and reminder about the budget, I'm looking forward to that. Um, I want to do a shout out and a thank you to our Palm Coast Fire Department, Flagler County Sheriff's Office, and also Public Works for their floats at the Starlight Parade. They were a lot of fun, uh, the, there were a lot of kids that were interacting, so I thought that was really cool, so thank you for that. Um, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, I wish everybody a safe holiday season and, um, looking forward to the next year.
Thank you.
I would just like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Kwanzaa, Happy Hanukkah, and also like to say that I am very pleased with the comments made by the mayor at our last council meeting regarding going to visit with constituents in their home and listen to them and what would, they would like to share with the mayor or with the council. Thank you.
Thank you, councilperson, I'm quite excited about that initiative. Um, the only comment I would have based on, uh, recent experience is, uh, so we have a few members of the, uh, of the community here with us and hopefully some more listening electronically, but staff in particular, because you're here in the room, um, everybody, please watch out for yourself and your own health and make sure that you and your family can enjoy the holiday period, healthy, happy, and move forward into a bright new year full of opportunity, which I think has been projected and promoted from this city council today. I could not be more excited about what the future holds for all of us, so thank each and every one of us that are here in the room together today. With that, I would ask the city attorney, are there any final comments for today?
Just have a, Happy Holidays everyone and have a great New Year, and I don't have anything else.
Very good, city manager?
Uh, yes, I do have a few items. As part of your packet, there's a sole source and emergency purchases, um, table, and if you have any questions that you didn't already have answered of communicating with me earlier, we're happy to go over those as well.
Very good.
I want to thank you because, uh, we did discuss some of those items and you answered my questions sufficiently, so thank you for that.
Oh, thank you. Uh, also, uh, to the vice mayor's point, we are gonna be kicking off, uh, 2024 pretty aggressively with the strategic action plan process and budget preparation. Uh, our January 3rd meeting was canceled, so this is your last official meeting for 2022. But going back to some of the comments made today on January 10th, you are going to receive some very comprehensive presentations, including, um, by the direction of city council, through the strategic action plan process of getting a stormwater update that comes to you twice a year. And it's not just stormwaters, also our engineering projects. And so today I heard reference to the Belter project, that will be part of your presentation on January 10th to get into some of those challenges and opportunities we're gonna have. And, um, specifically to the budget calendar, that is published, it's on our website. We encourage members of the public to be engaged. Uh, all of our last year's budget documents are posted for public viewing and again, that entire budget calendar is available on the website and will come to you directly through your leadership guide and the strategic action plan process. So January's gonna be, uh, very busy and we're excited about that. The only other item I have is I want to wish everyone Happy Holidays, our employees, which are the best employees in my opinion in, uh, in the world, and I appreciate everything they do and thank you city council and Nasa. Uh, wish everyone very much a Happy Holiday and see you next year.
So with that, I would ask for a motion to lower the gavel on the final, uh, city workshop and meeting of the year 2022. Looking forward, of course, to sounding the gavel at the first meeting, uh, in January. So may I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.